This conference will now be recorded.
Island, South.
I mean, I visited you before you were on the board.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we're live.
Good morning, everyone. Call to order the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for October 25. It's now 8:00 a.m. Carla, can you proceed with the roll call?
Vice Chair Carrie.
Present.
Member Hemigan.
Here.
Member Hudson.
Here.
Alshna Member Brenner.
Here.
Thank you. You'll please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic of which is stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Going to open the floor to public comment. This is if anyone has a topic not listed on the agenda. They would have three minutes per person of the limit to speak up. Does anyone, is anyone here for public comment? Seeing none, we'll proceed with the approval of the minutes. We have the minutes from September 20, 2021. Are there any additions, deletions, modifications to the minute? Yes?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a clarification. This was talked about at the joint workshop. Last month, I voted in favor of putting equipment on the roofs, flat roofs. And after consulting with a moving contractor, I ascertained that that was not a good idea. So I would just like to note in our minutes, maybe if we could do that.
Oh, I will go notice on this one. So now that you're saying, we'll notice on this one, and now you're in favor of it. But since that didn't happen at that meeting, we can't notice it.
So it'll end up on the minutes from today's meeting?
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Perfect, thank you. Anyone else? Hearing no further comments, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Sure.
Or no? Is the motion or is that?
I move the motion.
Okay. Are you all in favor?
So Vice Chair Carrie, before we move on to the next item, I actually just got in contact with the applicant for 113 Island Drive. He was confused with time, so he is running behind. He is on his way. So can we skip to item number three and go back to item number two, what the applicant is in?
All right. Should we move item two to after item four?
We can.
I have a comment on that before we do.
Yes.
We've closed public record. If he's coming late, if someone that would like to talk on public comment comes late, I would like them included also.
And so noted. And just for everyone to understand, there will be an opportunity for public comment during each of the quasi-judicials. Okay, so the same three minutes are allocated. Excellent. So we're moving to, do we need to have a motion to move the order, Kayla? To move the item in the?
Or consensus?
She doesn't have consensus.
Just a consensus, fine. So we are now to item number three. And that is the quasi-judicial development plan review for 120 Marlin Drive. And we'll proceed now to have a quasi-judicial hearing. At this time, any ex parte communication should either be disclosed by identifying the subject to the communication or identify the person, group, or entity whom the communication took place or any correspondence provided to the town clerk made a part of the public record. In addition, each member of the Planning and Zoning Commission should identify the existence of any investigation or site visit he or she conducted or any expert opinion received and disclose any conflicts of interest on this matter. I'll ask each of the commissioners to state whether they have any, have any ex parte or have done investigations or site visits. Dave?
Okay, I have no ex parte conversation with anyone involved in this. But as I do on every time we get one of these applications, I drive to the site and I look at it, which I would know that everyone here does. It's hard to make a decision if you don't look at the real estate. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Neil?
Likewise, I have, I've visited every site that I've ever had in front of us, just for educational experience. One of the properties here, the one on Island Drive, is a neighboring property to my property. Over the past year, at least, maybe a year and a half, I have been engaged with Durani and the town over what I thought code violations that have been brought to my attention by neighbors, but not to the extent that I think I need to step aside in any judgment on that property.
Thank you. Roger?
I just arrived from the north at eight o'clock last night. So unfortunately, I haven't been able to see the property. I've been here since May, but I agree, that's a practice I'll follow.
Thank you. And for myself, I have done a site visit to each of the three sites before us today. A drive-by and of the neighborhood. Thank you. We will proceed with the hearing on this matter. Will the town clerk please swear in the witnesses?
Will anyone wishing to speak on this item, please stand and raise your right hand. Applicants? Do you swear from till the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? When you come forward, please state your name, name and address clearly for the record, whether or not you have this warning, and please speak directly into the microphone.
At this time, the town staff, starting with the town planner, will give their reports.
Good morning, Chairman. I'm Mr. County Planner, sworn in. This is the development plan review for property of 120 Marlin Drive. The scope of work includes constructing a new two-story silverback home with flat bedrooms, office space, and five bathrooms, two and a half baths, two-car garage, and a one and a half car garage, and a swimming pool. The plan for review has been reviewed, revised, and complied with. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Good morning. Durani guy, building official, town of Ocean Ridge. Regarding 120 Marlin Drive, this is the second iteration that was presented to the town. Initially, I had comments. However, designer did address those comments. And at present, based on the portion of design that we have received right now, it does need the requirements for the Florida building code, which is the angle that I looked at this part.
Thank you.
Hi, Tara Bamber, Engineering Group.
Speak in the microphone, please.
Tara Bamber, Engineering Group, town engineer. The project needs the drainage codes, the town code. The only issue is we are requesting a six-foot drainage management along the south property line, and we are still coordinating with you.
Thank you. At this time, would the applicant like to come forward and make a presentation?
Good morning. My name is Wayne Wiesner. We small hall of construction, I'm the architect, I'm going to be the builder. My office is in Boca Raton, I live at 17 Sable Allen Drive, so I'm a resident of Ocean Ridge. We can go back to the site plan. Mrs. Thorson came to me about a year ago when we started working on the design of this house. We wanted to design a house for him and his family. We have a beautiful lot, has a wonderful view. We took advantage of that view by juxtaposing the house so it faced the point. And by juxtaposing the house to face the point, we created very large side yards that minimal impact on the neighbors. And as you walk into the main house, you look through the house to the pool. The pool is on a raised beam, this infinity pool that will blend in with the intercoastal behind it. Now we could go to the elevations, the colored elevations.
Would you mind letting us know what page this stuff is on, so we can talk more?
I don't have that confirmation. You need three. The largest challenge for this property, I think we handled it well, is the fact that the existing flood elevation is going to be at seven feet. However, the future flood elevation is at 12 feet, so we had to raise the house five feet from what is normal on that street. And I think it's a, as I said in my narrative, it's a, it's a street that's in transition because all the new houses are going to be a lot higher. So we wanted to address that in such a way where it didn't affect the neighbors either side in a minimal way. So we designed a house with a central two-story mass with one-story flanks on the side that have a minimal impact on the neighbors. I think we handled that well. There's a lot of open space between the, between the house and the neighbors. The house was designed in a, in classical proportions with more of a modern style, but not contemporary, just very clean lines. Let's get work on, she is here. Actually, I'd like her, she hasn't sworn in yet. If we could have her present the landscape, then I'll come back and answer questions.
You, you said that there's going to be a difference in the elevation, but I wasn't clear in understanding how you were addressing that, using retaining walls or?
The lot itself, we're raising two feet, there'll be smaller retaining walls on the side. But the house itself is just handled within, within the footprint of the house.
So, so I understand it. So along the neighbor's property line, there will be retaining walls?
Two feet.
Two feet, okay, thanks.
So the drainage will all contain on site.
Yeah, we've done, we've had an engineer, that's been reviewed by your town engineer. French trains and retaining.
That's a very profound question. The boundary report says there'll be four, parentheses, five, so it's one of the other.
It's five. Thank you.
Good morning. So just really quickly, please raise your right hand. Do you swear from till the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I do. Okay, just state your name clearly for the record.
Stephanie Portis. I'm a vice-inflated deep architect with PLA Design Studio.
Could you adjust the microphone, please? Thank you.
There we go. I'm going to repeat.
And then you're going to have us looking at the site plan and I'll make sure we're on the same page here together.
Sure.
Which, which do you want to?
It would be the landscape.
The landscape plan?
L two.
L two. Is it towards the back of the page?
Second page from the back.
Thank you.
You're getting close. There you go. All right. So here you're looking at the proposed landscape plan. Just to get you oriented, the bottom of the page is where the cul-de-sac is. On the far right, you'll see that hatched pattern with the lines, those, that's the drain field that we have to stay out of. So basically, our design intent was to create a soft tropical feel. So we're bringing in some large coconut palms to kind of frame the two-story structure. So you can see, as you enter the property through the driveway, we're flanking both sides, so you kind of have that really nice canopy. And then we'll repeat it further back to the left, framing the front doors with some slender palms. We also have, you know, dense vegetation along both sidelines to protect and buffer from the neighbor. As you approach the rear, we're trying to keep a lot of these views very open because Bill mentioned it's a beautiful sight. So over on the far left corner, if you're looking, it would be the west side. We've got a large coconut that's also supported by a specimen gumbo-limbo tree. Off of those side views, we're also, you know, adding a second layer of scale and privacy with a palm grove that is off of what's, you'll see the kitchen and the wet bar area on that west side. As you come across to the rear, we're framing again those views with the curved, sweeping coconuts that are pretty substantial in size. We also have two planters on either side of the pool with the date palms that are creating a really nice formal, you know, view that looks out to the intercoastal. And as you wrap around back to the east side, kind of treating it in the same manner, we're using the large native trees as a canopy and then supporting, in order to support the larger coconut. So we're creating, you know, upper story and mid-story to create layers of landscape.
Are the illustrations on PD3 consistent with the landscape plan on L2 or the earlier illustrations just?
I think they're similar. When we look at those, we kind of try to take what the architect has put together and use the same type of scale. But these scale-wise, yes, I believe that our landscape is a little bit more dense.
Yes.
Because when you're doing your rendering, you're trying to show the style of the house more than you are the landscape.
Thank you.
I have a comment, several on the landscaping. Both sides of the property pointing out to the cul-de-sac, it's ficus, correct?
Currently or proposed?
Pardon?
Currently or proposed?
Proposed.
Proposed, we're not using ficus. The only type of ficus we use would be a ficus green island, which is a low fence hedge. For the, for the buffers, we're actually using what we call a tree hedge with the calafoam trees that marked all the way down the side that's on the west side, supported by lower levels. So we have a pretty high buffer on the right side. We're a little restricted because of the drain field. So we tend to not put trees too close to where the pipes are going to be to intrude. So we're coming across that side with a fusia hedge.
So, so the ficus that is proposed will remain small?
Correct.
So it won't be suffering from white, white, light?
They're not susceptible.
That was the point I was hoping to do. Both the landscape plan and looking at the current house. By the way, this house, I think, is magnificent. So let me just start there. Very supportive of this house on the point lot at the end of that street. It's going to make a hell of a statement. The current house, I think, suffers from the view through the throttle-down entrance to the cul-de-sac with the amount of pavement that you see. So I'm concerned that the two outpropings that you've put in there narrow that entrance into that courtyard, that they're going to be dramatic enough or, how would we say, polluated enough that they're going to draw your eye away from what you now see. As soon as you drive up to that current house, all you think of is, my God, this is concrete parking lot. So I'm, I'm concerned with the size of the landscaping that you're initially putting in. I, I, I don't want to see us have to wait 10 years before that view gets choked down to the point where, at least when we are looking through, we're focusing on the house and not on the, on the courtyard.
Okay.
So I'm just seeing small trees going in there. I'm not seeing anything, I would like you to see up the sides of the trees so, and ensure that that sightline is narrower than it is now. I actually went out and measured it. I think now it's about, actually on the property line, it's worse when you come out into the setback. But I think you're down to 33 feet, and I think up there you're proposing 20. But I would like to see it actually be a corridor 20, not a panoramic 20. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I understand.
Okay. And I don't know how you do that with the trees on the up there.
So our design intent was, was, we've got eight-foot Japanese blueberry trees that are set up to kind of create a buffer, but not a wall of landscape. So what you might be asking for is to kind of block the eye level in a more wall-like fashion?
Well, yes, I know, I mean, I mean, I just don't want to see it be something that's three or four feet high now with one or two things coming out of it that aren't going to be mature enough to see in 10 years.
So on the left and right, so we have the large coconuts. Okay, those are the dominant features that you light up at night and are beautiful. You drive under the canopy. Just to either side, we're putting in silver buttonwood trees that are going to be full. And then we've got three Japanese blueberry trees that are going in at eight feet high. So they have about three to four feet of clear trunk, and then you have the tree. And then we've got the lower level ground cover. So you're correct in the sense that you will see through. It's a filtered view of landscape versus a walled-off view like a Palm Beach hedge. It's the current design.
Yeah. I mean.
Okay.
I have a question about the, any new blockage for property 121? Would it be SK 2.0? What page was it? SK 2.0 shows the fourth base reference.
What, what, what drawing are you on? Bottom right.
SK 2.0.
2.0, thank you. SK 2.0? Do I have that?
Right, right before L1.
It shows the neighborhood.
Before L1.
Okay.
So I was just trying to look at the 2.0, which shows me the relationship of the new property to the existing one. And then the, on the next page, L1, it looks like there's quite dense foliage planned. Or, if you look at L1, if you look at the quarter on the first base, well, that looks like it's pretty dense, so it would be, plus they're quite high, it's blocking the view of the neighbor.
Yes, but L1 is what's there now and what's being removed.
So those plannings are, okay.
That's, that's, that's.
That's the existing?
Yes.
All right. So then let's look at, what page should we look at to see where?
L2, the next page is the proposed.
So on L2, there's that large, where with all its edges, what is that referring to? That five-part face?
Oh, yeah, those are revision clouds. Those are revision clouds based on city comments.
So just to the point, so the trees that you're proposing and bushes, will they impair the view to the, I guess, the north side of your house?
From the neighbor's view of years of passing?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're creating privacy for our property. So, yeah, they wouldn't be viewing through to our property.
Or to the intercoastal area?
I don't think it's any less than what's kind of, I mean, it's pretty dense now.
I don't think, I don't know what our usual.
What we have going down that entire length of the property is a hedge that's going in at four feet high, which is a fusia hedge. And then there are supporting, you know, landscape. And once you get past the drain field, just because we're pretty restricted right there. You see that first coconut, and then further towards the water, you see a second coconut. That's the highest upper story. And then we're layering at the mid-level with a large gumbo-limbo, which is a native tree. And then we've also got, you know, layers of low ground cover. And we, we've got another native, it's called a silver buttonwood, going in at 12 feet high. So it's more of a filtered view.
So in terms of the number of trees you're putting in, I assume that that meets the town minimum for your construction?
It does.
I think it looks good.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Another applicant comment?
I still think we need to address the entrance. You know, right now, if you go to that house, it's wide open.
Absolutely.
We should choke it down to, down to, down to like 60% of what it is now.
And, and, and I'm paying you in compliment, I appreciate you doing that. All I'm asking for is that the landscaping on both sides where you're choking it be true enough from the beginning that.
Okay, so how much wood do we have on that coconut?
Right now?
I mean, it's, it's the.
Eighteen feet.
Eighteen feet tall, eighteen feet.
Of trunk before that it starts.
So we have more coconuts to start with, and then we drop down to lower trees.
Yeah.
I mean, the buttonwood's a two-inch tree.
Yeah, it's 12 feet high.
Pardon?
It's a 12-foot-high tree. The caliper comes at two inches, yes.
I'm asking you to go bigger.
Just on the silver buttonwood.
I, well, I think that's the umbrella effect of that tree, I think, is going to be the.
What is the?
I mean, we see coconuts all over town. Coconut is just a line on a property.
What is the drip line?
What, when it's going in, they're about five, six feet wide.
So what was the next size of?
Yeah, we've got them inspected, 12-foot-high by five-foot spread. So you can go up to the next size, and you can get them 14 to 16 with a six-foot spread. There are, they are going in as multi-trunks, so it's not just one two-inch trunk. So it's, it's multiple trunks. It's not a standard tree, like, you know, like the little lollipop versions you see of those. It's a multi-trunk.
Okay.
So we're trying to.
I understand, I mean, but I, I mean, I'm unfamiliar with the property and.
I mean, our intent is to close off the sides and frame the view in the middle.
Correct.
It's awful. And also, will we address the hardscape?
As far as the driveway goes.
You're that shape, what shape is that?
It's, I just have the one. It would be your site. But the driveway, I don't know, do you guys have each one in this presentation? I don't think. Okay. Sorry about that, sorry. So the driveway, we really just wanted to kind of break it up because it is a sea of concrete when you go out there now. So we've created these really simple, clean lines with the turf strips coming through just to kind of break it up and get a little bit more visual green. So it looks like the garden is more blending into the driveway. You can see that just that the entry point is at 20-foot-wide with the landscape flanking on either side. And then it opens up to access both garages. And then the pool, we're just, you know, working with the new grade because everything is kind of going up with the sea level rise. We've got, you know, a series of steps on either side of the pool to kind of really create a dramatic spillover effect. And then we're, you know, taking advantage of the beautiful views. And we have a lower deck at the very point just behind the pool. There you go. The spa is central to the design with a shallow shelf on either side for the lounge chairs.
Where you have the steps on the side of the pool. And symmetrically, you've got three steps, a little pad, and then three more. So it's, it looks like there is a protective wall on each side, so you're not falling off a six-step path.
Correct.
And then the, what color are you choosing for the, for the dry fall favorites and so forth?
I think we're going to be looking at doing just a simple concrete drive.
Just go with the white.
Just, or with a tabby finish.
With a what?
Tabby finish, which is like an exposed aggregate with shell. Called a tabby finish. A very fine texture.
Beautiful. It seems beautiful.
It's a premium driveway, it's the nicest driveway you can actually do.
I was just curious, the comments that Mr. Herring.
Yes.
About the entry, and I was thinking whether the coloring of that driveway softened the look, or it sounds like it's just going to be a bright white.
It's going to be light in color, it will be bright white. I try to stay away from bright whites, then you just see a bunch of fire marks. So then it turns to light gray, basically.
Anyone else have any questions for the applicant? And.
Do you have any questions for the architect?
There any, any architectural questions that could be addressed, and we'll have an opportunity to come back. There's, if there is, and you'll have an opportunity to. So at this time, if there's any member of the public who wishes to speak on relevant information to the Planning and Zoning Commission, they may come forward and speak for a maximum of three minutes each. And you must indicate whether you're for or against the project, or neither for or against the project. Is there anyone here in the public that wishes to speak on this application? Seeing none, we give staff an opportunity. Is there any further staff comments that need to be made here? And I had one question on the engineering. Where is this drain line that, that you're? And does it conflict with the current plan, the current landscape plan?
All right, so the, the pipe itself, there's a. Is that the engineering plan?
Because I believe your comment said that you wanted to make sure that the landscaping didn't create any.
That is, yes, a general comment that we have, but we did coordinate, and they, they pretty much resolved.
So you're, you're satisfied with the landscape plan?
Yeah, yeah.
That that's not a problem. Thank you.
But did you still want to talk about this place?
I don't. As long as you're satisfied, I'm happy.
Well, if, I mean, if we, if they grant us the easement, then, yeah, they can't have the wall or landscape. They have to push everything.
So the, so if the easement is granted, the wall will move?
Yes.
Okay.
And everything.
He's got a comment on that. Well, I don't know if it's time to discuss this or not, but we're, we're willing to discuss, given you an easement. However, there will be conditions on it that we'd be able to build landscape on top of it.
Right, and I know there's some negotiation between you and staff that has to take place.
Take place and take care of that before we probably discuss it here. We're open to having the discussion, making it work.
And, and we appreciate you being open to that. And this is not unique on this cul-de-sac. This is a problem throughout the town, and you're not the first applicant that we've asked to, to work with us on this, so.
But we certainly don't want to create six-feet-of-death space.
Well, that's why we leave it to you and staff to come up with a solution that works for both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just following up to that comment on Vice Chair Carrie and all other members, if you do approve this project, just make a condition that they can modify changes if they grant us the easement, so that way we don't have to bring them back. If they do have to either change some of the landscaping, maybe different ones that might be approved to go along that end.
Yes.
So just.
And we, we should leave that in the hands of staff to finalize. We don't want an applicant to have to come back before us. They don't want to be here at eight o'clock on a Monday morning, nor do we want to see them. Thank you. And now, has anybody from Planning and Zoning Commission have any further comments?
Just one. I think that we should be careful telling applicants how the landscaping should be done to suit our taste. What I see here looks like a pretty good plan. Maybe the trees aren't big enough, maybe there's something that personally, it's not our taste, but the staff has looked at this and said, it's good to go. And I, you know me, I'm always trying to let the individual's choice take precedence over our own design, except what we like. I'm not trying, I'm not trying to be, be on anybody, but this looks good to me as it is. Especially if we can just put it forward with, with the easement note, I think we're good to go.
I agree. I, I think none of us on here are design professionals and asking some clarifications and getting a better understanding. I think Neil's questions helped me understand that the plan, you know, is in keeping with, with our desire. And, you know, I appreciated the applicant did a good job of, of responding. Thank you. There being no further comments, we call the court judiciary meeting closed, and we will proceed with deliberation by the Planning and Zoning Commission. I can now either entertain a motion, or if there's more comment prior to the motion, the Planning and Zoning Commissioners are welcome to make them. Hearing none, I entertain a motion on this item number three for the development plan review of one-twenty Marlin Drive. Okay, move, your move is move to approve as-is with the conditions that set out in the, in the staff report. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Appreciate everyone for their good comments and explanations.
Can I just clarify, you all approved the project conditions on any staff comments? And it was members, and again, motions, questions second, and all for a favor?
No, it wasn't his motion.
Oh, who made the motion?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next agenda item we're, that we're going to address is the quasi-judicial hearing development plan review at the eastern portion of fifty-four Ocean Avenue. At this time, any ex parte communication should be, as you've identified. And has there been any with respect to this? None, okay, thank you. We'll proceed with the hearing on the matter. Will the town clerk please swear in the witnesses?
Well, anyone wishing to speak on this item, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear up until the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? When you come forward, please state your name and address clearly for the record and speak directly to the microphone.
Okay, now will the town staff please proceed? Corey?
Good morning, Chairman. My name is on board members, Corey O'Warren, town planner. This is the bulk plan review for property east, eastern portion of fifty-four Ocean Avenue, also known as eighteen East Ocean Avenue. The scope of work includes construction of a new two-story, single-family home with four bedrooms, office space, five full bathrooms, two one-half baths, two more garages, swimming pool, and spa. The plans before you have been revised to comply with zoning regulations, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
So, and we reviewed this one, the second iteration. First one had some comment, I think had to do with the approach, maybe a certain driveway that revised, and they came back which is, did the dollar requirements, and at this stage of development, it does need to be in our product for this part of the building.
Thank you.
Hi, there, member, engineering group. The plan does meet the town drainage code. There are minimal conflicts with landscape that can be revised during.
Thank you. Will the applicant now make their presentation?
Chase Lamson, twenty-thirty-six Alto Meadow Lane, Delray Beach.
Chase, what company are you with?
Southford Builders. Like it was said, we got a five-bedroom, I'm sorry, four-bedroom with an office, five-bath, two-story. I believe it's, I'm just kind of standing, so my partner's out of town, but what other information do you guys need to know?
And you can take the mask off when you're at the podium, thank you. That helps all of us.
Yeah. This is the second house on this lot. We're building, you know, I don't know, there is one. Sorry. I'll give him, or protect the presentation. Okay? He knows how it's better.
Yes.
Good morning, Darius Sabrowski, DZAP Architect, ninety-seven twelve, been your court broker town, Florida, three-three-four-two.
You adjust the microphone, you're taller than previous.
Thank you for allowing me to take the mask off. I feel like we can see everybody.
Helps us hear you, so speaking up helps also, thank you.
Thank you. This is a two-story H-shaped design. We were very respective of the street scape in the approach. It complements the one-story adjacent to the west. The idea was to capture the southern exposure, have a sightline into the pool itself, also capture the east-west of the sun. If you look at the site plan, you'll see that there is a resort-style living being captured by the covered porches. We wanted to take full advantage of as much outdoor space as possible, keep symmetrical balance, and a simple approach. The style itself is composed of flat brown concrete tile roofs, porcelain tiles accents with a very simple, smooth, understated stucco finish. The idea is to blend into the fabric of the town and not to stand out. And that is my presentation. And if you'd like to have additional questions or information.
Are you the one that's going to address any questions on the landscape plan?
In terms of landscaping, I can do my best. I've reviewed it in the past. The landscape architect was unfortunately unable to. If you can pull up the landscape plan, it would be helpful for me to quickly reference through the charts, only because I don't have it memorized. But I can state that the rendering is very accurate in terms of what implanted because the developer and the client specifically requested the rendering company to reflect what you would see. As you're approaching the site, you do see a triple fox tail palm. I recall correctly, it's a height of eighteen feet. The idea was truly to frame the entry. So as you're approaching it, you have a sense of destination. It frames where you're going. There's no ambiguities, and then you flare out into the garages, which will be hidden through gentle landscaping as well. And of course, we've taken a lot of time into avoiding conflicts with the septic system, the gas tank, the fresh drains.
What is the street-side backing, please?
I. It is a, it's a bush that's a evergreen. It's, you go down one page, there's a legend. There we go. And if you can blow that up, just because I do not have it memorized. Evergreen giant. I believe it's L-I-R. I apologize, my glasses limit me so much to see from this distance.
Oh, my main question is, what is the height that you're planting, and what's the height of the tree?
The height planting on the L-I-R states right there to the right. Use, I apologize, need to zoom that in for my aging eyes, unfortunately. The L-I-R states it's a twelve-inch high, at twelve inches on center. Its maturity, I cannot accurately state only because I'm an architect and not a landscape architect. But for the future, I will learn.
Does anyone else have questions about the landscape plan? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, if there's any members of the public that wish to submit relevant information to the Planning and Zoning Commission, they may come forward and speak for a maximum of three minutes, indicating whether they are for or against the project, or neither for or against the project. Does anyone from the public here wish to speak? Seeing none, we give staff an opportunity to make additional comments. Are there any additional staff comments here? Okay? And does anyone on the planning and zoning have a question of staff?
I have a comment.
Okay, please.
Whatever's my turn. Yeah, I would like to draw people's attention to the covered porch on A two-point-oh, and also on any of the, on several of the drawings, excuse me, the renderings, colored rendering. They are not numbered, but shown.
Yes, that's the one that's on the screen.
Okay. I, I have a concern here. This covered porch is just a couple of feet under a thousand square feet. Am I correct?
I'd have to go through the tabulations.
I, I would say it's loosely attached to the house. Because of that, it doesn't get included in the bar. In the long term, I have my doubts that it'll remain in that configuration, or possibly will not remain in that configuration. And I clearly think it's a hole in our ordinances. I think a truck just got driven through that hole. So I, I, I would like advice from the lawyer if there is a way for us in this type of hearing, or in any of the proceedings that will go forward, for us to ensure that that building slash porch, I admit it's a porch, or a covered patio at this point in the future is not enclosed, which clearly only takes sliders putting in those spaces. That is, there a way for us to document and ensure that it will immediately be a code violation and an unpermissible permit request for that to be enclosed?
Yes, you can.
I can agree with you.
I'm sorry, you can, obviously, this is the site plan approval. So if the site plan identifies this as a covered porch, if they were going to include that, they would have to apply for a site plan amendment. So as long as that's detailed on the site plan, and certainly with your motion, you can further say not to be enclosed. They certainly would have the opportunity, should they choose later on, if it's, if you want to enclose it, they would have to come back for a site plan amendment. And because it may not be able to be enclosed, so they're, they're close to the bar, then they'd be prevented from doing that under the current code. So this is a way of documenting it. What you're pointing out, I think, is a concern about. So this is a way of documenting it. What you're pointing out, I think, is a concern about enforcement issue down the road. But with our building official and code enforcement staff that we have, they're pretty good about spotting folks doing construction without permits. And that would obviously trigger code enforcement case.
Thank you.
Is anybody else sure my concern?
I do.
I think it should be part of the motion, I guess.
Only question, I, is you're, at one of my clubs, they have put in a large covered patio. And then they put in these very high-tech screens that roll down electronics.
That is correct.
And then they can be, they can buffer both wind and light. Multiple screens.
And hurricanes.
Well.
I mean, depending on which model they.
Well, they didn't choose that. This was mainly to
Sure.
cut out glare and wind during certain periods. So are you, are you proposing that that type of wind and glare shield not be permitted? Or can I ask you just what's your intent?
My, my, my intent is that it can never be defined as a building.
So you don't want.
Because if it was a building, it would be under the bar. This wouldn't be permitted at all.
So, so the, my fabric, roll-down screens would be acceptable to you, but anything solid like windows and garage door or any kind of shuttering would not be permitted.
That would be my intent.
Yes, okay.
But if I, 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 I agree with your concern. And several meetings in the past, we started looking at covered porches that were on the second story. And it appeared to me that it would be fairly easy to close them in and increase the living space.
This one's too big to blink at, though.
Well, we had some, we did have a pretty large second-story porch. So as long as it's addressed as a porch and it they need screens not only for sunshine, it might need it for bugs. This is Ocean Ridge. So I think that that would be an acceptable thing. How about you?
As long as it can't, doesn't get to the point where it becomes a building.
And I apologize since I'm so new. It does have two large second-floor patios, balconies rather, and those are already prohibited from being built otherwise.
Well, they're not included in the bar either. So if you, I can't, I'm going to be doing rap in public.
The same page really, yeah. This is just for my application.
So Roger, do you have a question for staff? It would be a staff question.
So the balconies that are being approved are approved just in their current state with no, no possibility without zoning appeal later to build into them to make additional enclosed room.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, when you include the balconies and all the covered porches, you're wishing 2,000 square feet of of space.
Yes.
The balconies, though, are not living space.
No.
They're not. Just, just as the porch is, it's recreational.
Yes.
That's wrong for the traffic.
Now, I like it myself. With some recognition that the porch remains porch.
Great. If the applicant or staff have no further comments, I'll declare the quasi-judicial meeting, hearing closed. We, as a commission, still have an opportunity to deliberate, deliberate between ourselves. Does anyone have any further comment? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on the proposed application here at the East, 18 East Ocean Avenue. Neil, would you like to?
Yeah, I, I mean, the, the the house, the view from the road, I think, I would like to compliment, I think it is in keeping with the community. So I'm in favor of permitting the house. I would just like it to be conditional on acceptable documentation of future use and the permissibility of future use and the fact that as constructed, it is a porch and can, and should remain a porch or covered patio, whichever one we're calling.
Can you phrase that as a motion?
I'm making that, I said that as a motion. I'll make it, I'll, I motion that we accept it subject to those conditions.
Subject to the porch to remain enclosed.
The the are we calling it a porch or are we calling it a open, that it remain, that it remains now and in the future, an open patio cannot be enclosed?
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any more comments before we vote? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll now proceed to the quasi-judicial hearing, development plan review for 113 Island Drive. At this time, are there any ex parte communications that should be disclosed or identified? Okay. Then we'll.
Can you just say no into the record?
Yes, there are none.
Excuse me, I made comments initially in a general sense, and I mentioned this specifically.
Okay, this I visited that it was across from you.
Pardon?
They said that it was a property across from you, but you don't have any conflict of interest in regards to it.
I have no conflict of interest.
Right, are the witnesses ready to proceed with the matter? And will the town clerk please swear in the witnesses?
Will anyone who should speak on this matter, please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear or are you until the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? When you come forward, please state your name and address to the record and whether or not you have this warning. And please speak directly into the microphone.
Thank you. Corey, you want to proceed with the staff report?
Our four members, for the Longtown Planner, this is the development plan review for 113 Island Drive South. The board includes construction of a new two-story single-family home, five bedrooms, five and one-half bathrooms, swimming pool, spa. The plans before you have been reviewed and revised and before you are consistent with town zone regulations. We have to answer any questions quick then.
Thank you.
You're any guys in the picture? This project has been reviewed several times previously before this final presentation in front of you. Just briefly, I'd like to comment based on the location and have a connection to 122 Marlin Drive as well. This portion of the town is the northmost portion. At the last FEMA review, where they're working on the final revised maps, took into consideration wave action on the northern island. Like the other islands that we have, they're actually covered. And, you know, this island creates a barrier for Spanish River and inlet. So based on the studies, it was shown that if we do have a wind event, that the effect of waves on these finger lots, as I would call it, would be a lot more aggressive than other areas. So we'll find that the requirement has increased to 12 feet from some areas. For example, what happened at 120 Marlin Drive and any of those other lots. There's a portion of this lot also that was subject to that same, uh, new classification. I say all of that to just say that it was a challenging lot for the developers to come up with a, you know, final solution. And it took some time, and I think they've had to wiggle, and you'll probably see that reflected in the the, the, the plant views, that it was a challenging development. Finally, they've come with something and with regards to the minimum standards of the building code, it actually does mean, so, you know, just saying that, you know, they did spend some time for staff to spend a lot of time on this one. So, you know, we're back on board, but finally, we're there. And the, the building official does give his approval with respect to building codes for this.
Thank you.
Hi, Tara Amber Engineering Group. Um, yeah, we went through several rounds of comments with, on this project, and they've met all of the town code for drainage. You have seen I don't have that many concerns.
Have you, have you assessed the, the water issue?
The water?
I mean, where, where the water's going on the property? We don't have a drawing that shows how the drainage of the property is being addressed.
It might not have it up here.
So they have it's broken in two, I guess, left, the right, I'm not sure where the, where there is. So on the right side, there's a long 30, 36-foot trench drain.
Which drawing are you looking at?
I am looking at BD dash one. No, because that's the, that's the
Well, do you guys also want to see spibble as well?
Well, my, I mean, whilst Tara's up here, I'm addressing this item that I would have addressed later. To me, this is a lot that is severely impacted where the water's going to go. And we didn't get sometimes it's not necessary in our review. I understand that. But in this one, it should have been.
Well, what I have, so they broke it in half and the west. Yeah, so the south side has exfiltration trench. The north side has an exfiltration trench below the driveway, and then it has swales to bring everything to those. It's typical drainage plan for the town.
Okay, there is, there is no storm drain on this property or immediately close to it. Is that not correct?
A village storm drain?
Yes.
No, I don't think so. Okay. It's not showing on here. I'd have to look.
Perhaps in the future, Tara, when you're doing a report for the meeting, maybe you could describe in your report where drainage will work and where.
Yeah.
I mean, I will refer, I'll refer people to, let's see, where it shows the hard scape on this property. SP 102.
Do you have a question?
Well, I, I mean, that's just what drew my, drew my attention to where the hell's the water go.
So the driveway is, you know, just north of the property line. So on that left side, which is like the south side, there is exfiltration. So there's inlets, exfiltration between the middle of them. And then for the north side, because the septic system is right right of that driveway, they put the exfiltration trench under the driveway. That makes sense. And then they have swales along the north side.
And, and is, are there, excuse me, are there ways for the water to go under the driveway into the swale areas?
Well.
I mean, I, I just can't, I just can't, I mean, wa- walking in front of that property and looking at it and looking where the hardscape is relative to where the lot, the lot line is and not whether it's going out into the right away. I just don't know where the water's going.
So you're talking about right below the driveway?
Pardon?
Are you talking about right below?
I'm talking about all across that, all across the front from the left, what I'm looking at there, the left, which would be the west, the west edge of the property, all the way to the east side of, of, of the driveway.
A note on page SP 101, there are two rainwater linear drains. I think it's the way it's intended, with the width of the two driveways.
Yeah, so there's the, the regular trench drains at the driveway. And a lot of designers are now kind of taking advantage of that to get, to get the flow to those, and then it goes into the system.
Okay.
And then there's.
This last rainfall that you go down the street to the next corner of Benito. I don't know how many times now that property has been regraded in the last year to try to deal with the rainwater runoff on that property. Okay, that property is pervious. This is impervious. Okay? There is a lake on that corner almost all the time. I just, I'm just baffled here. That that's not going to be worse.
Right. I know where you're talking about, and I think it's the combination of the lot, but also it's just the combination of all of the road drainage that's going into that swale.
Would one solution be instead of having the hard pavers, the concrete slabs, to have what is used in some other locations where you have grass sections or sand or some, you know, crushed out, the water can go through it in strips and squares. So that would make it allow the water to bring down. Is that a solution?
Um, yeah, you're talking basically about pervious driveways.
Right.
Yeah, um. So those are, those are okay. We don't actually credit them for those type of driveways in Ocean Ridge. The problem with those is eventually they kind of build up their tolerance to being pervious because of always being driven on. But it's it's not bad to put those in. It can be beneficial. It's just drainage-wise, we don't take.
In my home on Big Top, the fire department requested that a drive to the next unit be built through the woods and about 15 feet wide, and they have pavers, six inches grass, pavement, sixteen feet. And, you know, it's a good pattern.
I don't think he approves extensions.
Well.
We have code about that.
Okay, I'm just saying that, that of course drains perfectly. For instance, it does have vegetation between the pavers. It doesn't get compacted and it continues, the wood continues to provide drainage.
Right. Um, I know we do have code. I don't think we can do this.
Well, sorry, I'm not, I'm just, I'm not, you know, part of the six inch, I'm just telling you something that I've seen work elsewhere and that in my colleagues' concern about drainage, I was trying to think of a real possible solution.
There are many new techniques for drainage and it it would not be harmful to actually look into those for these properties. But, you know, that would be another discussion.
Can the water be taken from the front into the green space that's on the north corner of the property? With a depression created that will do that water?
Or are you talking about the corner?
The northern, you're pointing at, or somebody's circling.
There, yeah. So there's a swale.
Fields in there.
Yeah.
Part of it, part of it.
There's a swale. There's a swale.
That's, that's big enough for a septic field and to do what I'm talking about.
There's an inlet on that corner and there's a swell going all along that north end, so that should be able to provide it to go into the drainage system.
There's an inlet where?
On the corner, but you can't see it because you don't have this.
A town drain?
So, here we go, there we go. No, there's not a town drain. Go back up. The right on the corner?
Right here.
Yeah, so that's a swell, the line is the swell and then there's an inlet.
And you can see the L one in the landscape. Right there with that line is, you can, there's a hill going through.
I, I'm talking about down here in, in front of the drain field. In front of that. That can, can we bring the water across under the driveway and have a big enough swell in there to capture, surface capture, not intending that it's going to percolate away while it's falling down? Something similar has been done on Island Drive on the west side, the corner lot on the west side of Benito. It's a lot that is shaped just like this. It is a large front, hinged at the back lot that had, had the same issues until it was addressed with taking the water under the driveway and putting it into like a disguised cistern or a large swale, whatever you want to call it.
I, I'm sorry, just not really following what you're asking for.
He's kind of asking for maybe they can do a swell here as well?
Yeah, we're gonna, they can't drain into the right away, so they will.
No, I'm not talking about draining either right away. I'm talking.
I don't know, I know the driveway, I don't know.
I, I'm just saying, I'm, my concern is whether exfiltration is going to capture and disperse all this water in a, in a timely manner before it goes out into the river.
Yeah, I can see that.
It's happened on two other places, same side of the street, Island Drive. And I'm, I'm, I'm asking if we're addressing it in a way that we can take care of it now rather than later?
I mean, there are calculations we can ask for them to do to make sure.
I mean, I wasn't privy to any of those, so I, I'm shooting from the hip, I understand.
Right now, this isn't what we usually do, but there are calculations we can ask for to make sure that it stays on the property before like the certain, certain year storm.
All the time.
So I, I, I understand your concern now.
Thank you.
And I can, you know, during permitting, we can address it.
Well, that turned to a different topic.
Sure, please.
You, you talked about, talked about the flood zone issue, you know, I mean, homes need to have heights raised. I note that the two garages on page eight three.
Now, this is an area question.
We were just.
We're with the town engineer right now.
Well, my quest, my question is, the garages are both lower than the main structure. Is that a problem during periods of flood? And if the garage is flooded, is that a threat to the structure itself?
No, so the garages should have, Johnny, you want to address that?
It's on page eight three oh one.
Okay, so with garages and storage, the code does allow for those areas to be below the flood and actually be inundated if we do have a flood situation. What the requirement is for them to have what's called storm vents. In the event that there is a flood, there would be a storm vent that balances the water inside the garage here, so there wouldn't be an effect on the actual structure.
Are there storm vents in these garages?
They, they are shown on the designer, they, they would be too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
If the applicant would like to come forward and make a presentation, then we'll have an opportunity for members of the community to speak.
Hello everyone. Good morning, Patricia Della Holmes, one one three Island Drive, I'm the contractor, I have no other problem.
The owner of the property?
Yes, I am.
And this is being built as a spec home?
Yes, it is, correct.
Well, lovely to come live here.
I actually did another one right down the street on one seven and one, together, so.
Thank you.
Built beautiful in there as well, so love working in Ocean Ridge. So any questions? We're, we're building a five bedroom, five and a half, three car garage, marten farmhouse, we're calling it, kind of designed with some of the tones and the whites and the grays, metal roof is the, is the vision on that house. I think we did a, a great job on that specific lot. Like I said, it is a very challenging lot indeed, just based on, you know, the high shape property that we had to deal with. It's not the regular typical, you know, square or right, that's a lot. So it was very difficult and we've had gone back and forth with the town to try and meet the codes as best as possible. You have any questions up here to answer?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions for you. When I look on page A one zero one dot one, I see what looks like.
A one oh one dot one?
And the house is described as having a three car garage. But on this rendering, the vehicle to the right, it looks like it says golf cart somewhere on there. One car garage plus golf cart?
Just because the angle that we had to take, if you're looking at the plan right there, just to meet the, like I said, a difficult lot of it, but it is, does have the requirements of what I know car would be able to fit there.
Okay, and when I look at that, there's a, there's a dash square that sits ahead of the smaller car or golf cart. I just wondered, is, is that a feature that's going to sit in the garage?
No, that's not necessary. The, the one I'm looking at right now, I do see two specific cars and that is on sheet A one oh one dot one, right, that's what we're looking at.
Yeah.
On my, yeah, there we go.
See that little square ahead of the golf cart?
Attic space.
Well, attic access.
Yes.
Where are the drains and the, I'm just drawing to set up curiosity.
It, not on this specific sheet, it would be on this one, it would be on the site plan?
Yeah, just describe it, just literally describe it.
You're saying the drains to?
Yeah, we were talking about this, there's special drains required since they're below the.
Oh, it's two, it's going to be an actual vent, which is on the right hand side. If you look at that number twenty-four, you look closer in there, you'll see the vent, which is, you know, the number is called number twenty-four. It's towards the right, bottom right of the corner.
That's the garage here.
I have another, just a, a question. It's your house, it's well designed. But at the front of it, to the left side of the house, as you're looking at it, you have the one car garage and then there's a horizontal window and that's, is that for the mudroom?
It's the larger.
Large mudroom, yeah. So it's a little inconsistent in the lines, but it's your house, I'm, I'm just curious why you didn't choose a vertical one?
Just allows for, just to get enough light in there, but does not allow it to see exactly out the front of the, or the design.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Do you have any?
No, I have none. And then you, let's probably want to look at the landscape plan on one.
Actually, I'd like to stay with the site.
And that's?
SP one oh one.
Go ahead.
Okay, can you walk me through the walls on the perimeter to the west and the northwest on the property? All the way back to where they would join on the water?
So the west side, which is the side with the waterfront, correct?
No, the west side is what butts to the house, there's a house to the west.
As I said, it's a more high shape kind of like house, yeah, so let me just try to see, because I know, looking straight down, I know I'm looking west and the front of the house is east typically and looking at the west side, would you look at, say, if we look at the front?
I got my compass straight. Looking at the front of the house, the left side.
Okay.
And then the diagonal on the back.
The, the two, is that the retaining wall pertaining to?
The retaining walls, yes.
Yeah, and the retaining wall, we're doing on both sides of the home, if you look at that, you can see it's all the way down, the whole property, the retaining wall goes down.
Okay.
And also on the other side of the property.
So the retaining wall on the left, on the left side of your drawing, there is, at the back, is going to be at nine foot NAVD?
Yes.
Top of the wall is nine. And then it's, then it's going to be, then it's going to go down to seven and a half as it comes towards the front of the property. And then on the, the other wall, it's also going to be nine foot and about halfway down, it's going to go down to seven.
Correct.
So looking at spot elevations and then the condition of needing a fence, there's no, no drawing in here showing where the fences are going or how either the fences are after they're on top or near that nine foot wall. Can you describe those for me?
On the upper right of that page one oh one, a little inset that shows.
Right.
Is that the fencing you're asking about?
Yes, but I don't, I don't, I don't see where the limit, I don't, I'm trying to figure out where the limitations of the fence are as we come down the wall. I, I understand the drawing. Insert you're talking about?
Just, if I can interrupt for a moment, the wall from the neighboring property line, because I don't know how it.
It's a consistent, you wanted to consistent size, how it's going to come down based on what we did.
How much elevation difference will there be on the wall there? You know what?
I don't know exactly.
You don't know what the height does it?
I believe on that far west corner on the water, I believe the, the wa- the wall is going to be seven feet above between six and seven feet above what's existing there. I believe the neighbor's property falls to two feet.
Tara, can you help us here?
Yeah. Do I need to go? Um, so I don't think you have a survey?
Oh, yeah, you should look into the microphone so that I can.
I, I think it's important for us to know how, how much retaining wall there will be visible to the neighbors on either side. Because if you, if you take that and then put our standard six foot fence on top of that, it could be, it could be much more than worth.
Yeah, I don't think we can put fences on top of walls like anymore, I just don't think.
Okay.
But the two, the two point.
I put this into the record? Okay, I'd like to pass, I'd like to pass this down. This is a rear view of the lot.
Everyone?
I don't have a. You share one with me, they can share.
Can you describe what you just added to the record?
Okay, I have a view of the C wall, the back of the property, the end of the.
Not that way. Can I keep going? There, does that have the elevations on it?
Is the boat lift on this property on your new?
Alright, so this.
Okay, there's two lifts on that view. The one that has a platform with the two black items on it for holding wave runners, that is not on the property we're talking about.
The other boat lift is on the.
The other boat lift is on the west, what would be, no, the.
Which, it's the same boat lift that's shown on the, on.
That's correct, right, that is correct. Yes.
You need to see what we're looking at, share that with Tara, please.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So this thing, well, I'll label it on another one.
Yeah, now can you proceed into the question?
So now, my concern is when we're looking at this sort of view, which is a real view rather than a drawing, because I, I can't, I don't see the perspective I'm talking about from drawing. If I'm looking back over the existing boat lift into this corner right here,
Yes.
what am I going to see for a wall?
You're going to see a nine foot wall. On the other side is six point two.
So it'll be seven.
You're not going to see a nine, it'll be at elevation nine. I don't have a lot of grades.
Pardon?
Would the visual aspect be a two foot wall, since it's nine?
Yeah, so the other side of the wall, the neighborhood, neighbor is going to be about a three foot long. And on this side, the elevation is nine, but it's not at nine. They didn't give me a lot of elevations for like the pool and everything. That, that'll probably be like nine, eight and a half. So the wall isn't going to be so.
Go to the drawing, survey, I don't, doesn't have a page number, it's a second from the back of my thing, and go into that corner and it shows a two point six.
Yes, that is the C wall.
That is, and that's my point. So the wall is going to be nine feet high and the C wall's two foot six. Correct?
Correct, there'll be steps going down.
I understand that, but we're talking about a six and a half foot solid wall on that entire view that I just showed you. Pardon?
Well, then maybe a taper?
Well, I'm not looking for a solution yet, I'm just looking for a description, okay? Okay, so that, so what I'm seeing there is that from property line to property line along the water, we're looking at a nine foot concrete wall.
If we had to raise it, remember for all the new FEMA requirements.
Didn't ask why, I'm just describing, we're going to be looking at nine feet of concrete from the water, correct? Whether it's C wall, C wall cap?
I mean, there's probably.
The top of that wall, you said, is nine foot NAVD?
Yes.
That is correct, is that correct?
Yeah.
The C wall, as you can see, and the properties on both sides of what will then be that nine foot wall are between two foot six and three foot. Is that not correct?
That's correct, but you can't.
Nine minus three, did you get six foot?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and on the other side of that greenery, it's actually a low spot on the neighbor's side of that. And we measure it from the low point, we don't measure it from the high point, correct?
Where's the low spot?
In the cor- in the corner of the neighbor's lot.
Be sure that two point six is the C wall.
Okay, well, I'm pretty sure that when I went over there, the ground was lower than the wall.
I mean, I only have what's.
So, so, so what, so what we're, what we're doing is we've literally built a fortress wall on that back line, correct? The thing runs up the property and I agree, it, it gets down to the point where it'll be a three or three and a half foot wall. But on the back, that's what we're imposing at the end of this hinged canal that for years has functioned by neighbors cooperating with neighbors. And, and now we're going to stick a nine foot barricade wall in the middle of all that.
I think.
You've just, you've designed and engineered a solution for your desires. You haven't designed or engineered something that's compatible with the neighbor's use of that area or where the water's going to go when it comes down.
I, I personally didn't design it.
I didn't design it, so you're here to, you're here to represent who designed it.
Yes, I'm here to represent you, correct. We went with, with the code required. We went with, with the code requires.
No, you went with what the code allows, you didn't go with what will be committed.
My architect worked with the town, with codes that could be met.
I understand, but the, a building, a building official tells you what you can do, he doesn't tell you what you should do.
We go within design of what we can do per the code, so that's what we went with, presents.
Okay, well, what I'm, what I'm saying is, I just, I just want my fellow people here to imagine living on either side of that, and the impact that's gonna have on you. That's like somebody came down at the end of that canal and put the bowel of a destroyer into the end of a waterway.
I've seen another property.
Typically, we have the architect and the landscape architect as part of the presentation, so you are at a disadvantage because you didn't bring your professionals to this, to speak to us.
To speak to these.
Very well, very well explain this thing all to our satisfaction.
Changed the week for us, that's why there was a limitation, that's why they couldn't make it, because that's some other. I understand what you're saying.
I would suggest getting more survey for that area, for a building permit, and tapering the wall.
We're willing to work with, you know, to make it, you know, easy for you guys, of course. We will, you know, we just wanna get moving forward, we're willing to work with you on those kind of things.
Well, I, I mean, I don't, I don't think this is a minor little facelip, to me, this is something that you are going to have to, to get my support, you will have to take this property and wedding cake it, whatever you wanna call it, cascade it back. This is here to support the swimming pool. It's not here to support the house, from what I can tell, okay? Your other drawing on page, your other survey, which is at the back, shows a note that says, limit of moderate wave action. Okay? So now, so now we're talking not what impact this is going to have on what the neighbors would see. This is, where is the water gonna go that hits this wall that's nine feet high? You've liter, you've literally said to the people that live on both sides of you, this is now your problem. I'm building a house, and this water is now your problem.
Right. Um, like it's, then the outside of the property, to be the left side, has two drainage inlets and an exfiltration system in the middle of them. Um, I'm not sure how you're, like, like this is the property, the town allows for the drainage to stay on the properties, I'm not really sure.
Okay, I don't think this is, this isn't a drainage issue, this is a safety issue. You're putting a wall, partial wall, at the end of a pipe, and you're saying to the other people, it's your problem, what if I was standing on each of the neighbor's docks on their sea wall that exists, that are all within code, and now that surge comes down that inlet and hits that now barricade, where's the water going? Sideways. You need, you have to put something in here that addresses slowing the water down, but not sweeping somebody off their damn sheet, or, or clearing everything off their dock.
Is that sympathetic to your concern? And I think you put your finger on it, that, that this is designed so the pool will be nine feet above sea level. And so then it's just everything is nine feet. Property, now your fortress.
A fortress?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, I think that is a problem.
There are other properties in the town that the sea wall is three to four foot high, comes back in five to six feet, goes up another couple of feet, or comes back even a third time, and stair steps minimizes that brutal impact of the view, what we're talking about, and lets.
I've seen, I've seen another one just like this in town, just like this, that's being built.
Yeah, I wasn't there that day.
So, it was one I was directed to go look at.
Okay, I wasn't there that day. I'm here, Bill, this.
I'm just saying, that was being built already right now.
Can I ask clarification, when you look at SP 101, and you look at the point on the left side?
Hold on, I'm not there yet.
This is on the left side of the pool. It looks like there's a set of around eight or 10 steps.
What?
Steps going down, correct.
So is the pool height, the top edge of those steps with a barrier on the backs, on the inlet side of the pool? Or where do those, when those, those steps are taking, right, taken?
You, you have a very challenging lot here, but it should not be the neighbors that bear the impact of letting you do what, quote unquote.
Well, my question, just is, is, the steps are going down about, I don't know.
Tended to the side, and then the side of those steps, it's, it slopes, it swells all the way down.
So it's eight feet, now, when you get to the bottom of this, of, are the steps, the steps I think are descending as you head toward the water, is that correct?
Yes, he's sending us, it goes down towards the water.
Okay, and is the height of the pool the same as the bottom of the steps, or the top of the step?
I would, I would think the top of the step.
The top of the steps, because there's no steps going down to a pool to the side, so.
Yeah.
You can see the A203, A203.
The wall to the left of the pool is gonna be the, the pool's height.
Okay, that's helpful, A203 is very helpful. So in, in terms of your question, about the bow of the destroyer, A203 helps us visualize it a little bit, because it looks like there is a patio that is kind of much lower than the nine foot wall.
Yes.
Okay, I will go back to SP 101. Where is the wall on SP 101?
The pool wall?
No, the wall that's drawn in SP 101.
Where's the wall on SP 1, is that your question?
On the south side.
I think if, if you look at A203, there are a couple of pictures that I think show us real well what the wall looks like, and it actually does kind of, it's not, it's not as fearsome as I imagined from what we were talking about.
There's inconsistency in several of the drawings, okay?
Could be, I'm saying, I'm just saying.
That's part of, part of what I'm addressing.
Fine.
Yes.
Okay.
And it needs to be pointed out, the photo in A203, the large wall that we're speaking of, they had put landscaping growing on that to hide it, but that's not going, that's not what it's gonna look like on the neighbor's side.
I really just feel, I mean, like we could answer this if we have more survey, and we can taper the wall, so it doesn't need to be at nine at that point.
Right. Does it ever need to be at nine?
Does it ever need to be at nine, well, I mean.
Or, or, or the wall that's more into the property can be at nine.
Where is it more?
Which would be, one of the walls is the pool, one side could even be the inboard side of the pool to protect the house, doesn't have, doesn't have, doesn't have to protect the entire property at nine feet on the, like a barrier on the edge of the property.
I mean, really, this is no different than, than all the plans, it just happens to be on the water.
Doesn't matter, it's not all the plants, it is one house on one lot with two neighbors.
Just trying to understand why it's so different than all the other plans that we look at.
Well.
The shape of the lot is one.
The shape of the lot, the use of a, of a pinched area in, and it's coming again to a neighborhood near you, they're, they just knocked down the house underneath of, it's on canal, identical. So it's not a one up.
I can't go. Can I say something on the record too, that we have to be careful of, you know, comparing this to other lots, this is a lot, and there's.
That's what I tried to say.
Right, there are certain things about this lot which makes it unique, and reasons why we have to go into different things, I don't think we can sit here and compare to other homes that have been built or parking built.
I know, but I also, I mean, it's hard to be like, hey, well, you should put your pool at five.
It's hard to what?
You know, he's talking about putting the pool below, so to put your pool at five and step up to your house, I don't, I don't know if you can ask them to do that either.
We're gonna slow that down, we're gonna be no matter what higher than anyone else, never will be, it's always gonna be that way. With the fit, all the new codes, we have to be higher. To retain, well, all the house I build, I do retain walls on all the homes I build, and we do an infiltration system on all the homes, keep all the water on the sites, that's just how we do it, all the homes we build.
Well, the, the picture to the drawings are inconsistent, nothing else.
And so I don't, I mean, I wish the architect or the engineer were here, but there is also a discrepancy between the wall on the site plan and the wall on the engineering plan, it says seven point five. So I, there is another discrepancy, but I'm not the engineer, I'm just looking.
Nor am I.
So I did, I think we should go back to the people who designed this and see which one they're, because seven point five is a lot lower than nine. So if that's their actual design, which is on an engineering plan, which they tend to be more accurate, and it's not as bad, and we can also, I, I feel like we should go back to get more survey for the adjacent property, and then, and then look at it after that.
Is that, that your recommendation?
Yeah, I think so, yeah. Because I agree, like you don't want a nine wall, nine foot wall, but there's reasons why they taper these things, you know, so.
Yeah, but, but draw the wall where it really exists, if this isn't where it is, don't send this site. Okay?
So I have a question for the applicant before we proceed any further. The engineer has found discrepancies between your drawings, and is recommending that they be reworked. Are you willing to defer to the next meeting and bring us the adjustments she suggested? This is.
I wish I would have known about this early, because there's a lot of back and forth on this, I know, because we did do, usually pick these things out before we go to a meeting like this.
I, I agree, you're, you're talking about a volunteer board here, this doesn't want to be dealing with the engineering issues, we'd like that all been resolved, but apparently there are some unresolved issues, and
That's.
I, I don't know that you at this point, you know, it's your choice, you can ask us to bring it to a vote, or, or ask to have it deferred to the next meeting, I'd rather make that your choice, I'm just offering that at this point before we proceed any further.
So if I go proceed, it's gonna go for a vote?
There's, there'll be a vote and a motion, and.
If that's what happened, I was still going for the next meeting, discuss that, correct?
Or longer, you know, if it takes to resolve.
You know, what we'd love to do is to have the engineer come and say, she's satisfied with the drawings, which I hear right now, that there's discrepancies, that's, that's where, that's where kind of gets us in a tough bind, voting on something that there's some discrepancies in drawings.
We'd like to know where the walls are, we'd like to know how high the walls are, we'd like to know where the fences are, we'd like to know how high the fences. We'd like to know.
So if there's a retaining wall, what's, what's the code to go above the retaining wall on? That's, that'd be a good question.
Okay, yeah, just have to chime in on this. So within a waterway, within twenty five foot of the waterway, the maximum fence height, wall height is four feet, not six, we've quoted that a few times, just waiting for my turn. So the max is four feet within the waterfront. The next thing we've been oriented is with the fence, so what we've been recommending is that the fence be offset from the retaining wall, so we don't have a strong vertical offset, and then that allows, you know, the fence still to be there for safety purposes, and not be on top of the wall directly, to give that barricade, you know, high wall that we're looking at. It's four feet for the wall, and we are recommending that the fence be set back to not be a strong vertical.
How far back do you recommend the fence be set back?
A foot. One foot, just one.
And this is a question for all staff. Did issue sufficient that they need to be reworked, relooked at, or would a conditional recommendation give you the latitude to resolve these things?
But I'll be honest, there is a discrepancy, if we look at the, the perspective, which is from top of bird's eye, you kind of hang of looking, it does show that wall being, the structural wall being for the pool, and not on the property line. The, 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 the plan that we're just looking at actually showed a detail of it on the property line, which is inconsistent with the perspective. Again, you know, if, if, if it's not clear enough for you guys, then, you know, I mean, it is, it is something for you to consider, but in any case, these are the kind of things we look at at building permitting. We make sure that whatever comes into us meets the goals, I mean, even if it's not a hundred percent resolved here, before permitting, we make sure that everything that goes on is in accordance with our goal.
I think the discussion we've been having is not so much what is the maximum height permitted by code, but what is appropriate given the neighbors and so forth, so.
I think this goes beyond what I'm comfortable with a building official adjudicating on.
I agree.
Well, we need to, if the applicant has nothing further to present, we need to proceed through the, the balance of the of the meeting, and the next portion would be members of public who want to, wish to submit relevant information to the Planning and Zoning Commission, come forward and speak for maximum of three minutes, and give an indication whether they're for or against, when you come up, please give your name, address. Thank you.
Martin, we should like, by the angle drive. There's, there's two things that worry me about this greatly. Do we actually calculate, this is a question specifically to our engineer here, do we calculate the water runoff that we have of these driveways that goes into those catch drains? And then how big is the, the basin under, underground that actually catches the water? Do we calculate that, or we just assume that it's gonna be done?
Um, so we asked for storage calculation from the engineer, and then we asked for the driveway trench to be at the right away, and then it goes into the system. So it's a part of the system.
So you're actually calculating the, the amount of runoff that will come off a driveway, of a particular driveway versus?
Not off the driveway per se.
I'm talking about the two trench strings that are going across the, at the property line, across the driveway, drive in and drive off, on, on this particular block. Those, those catch drains, there's an, there's an amount of water, there's a, there's a distance between the house and, and the catch drain that is taped. That water can be calculated, there has to be, I think, you have to catch one inch, correct? One inch per hour, so there has to be a calculation where this is seven hundred square feet. this is seven hundred square feet of driveway that is all flowing into this catch drain. By five hundred, seven hundred square feet produces X amount of water. Do we have enough calculation underground and actually can retain that water? Do we do that?
Well, yes, if you're talking about the full site. If you're talking about just the trench drain and what's coming off of it into the trench drains, then no, we do not ask for those calculations.
And why don't we do that? Because it's, it's, we're, we're running in this town, we're running into a problem where we're having our floods, our streets flooded by driveways that have runoff water from the, from their driveways, sometimes even from their houses that go into these drains. If the, if the, if the amount of catching that we're doing cannot be retained underground, we can, you know, the, the, the catch drain, if it's not attached to anything, will do absolutely nothing.
Yes, no, that.
So it has to be connected to something.
Yes, it's.
If it's connected to something, is that connection that it is connected to big enough to hold an inch of water? Or whatever the calculation is that sits in front of that house that will ultimately run into that catch.
Yeah.
Why do we not calculate?
We do calculate it.
This is more than the two driveways. It's paved all the way across the front. Which is now gonna fill the area that you're gonna dump the driveway in.
I hear you. Technically, that that drain should go over the entire length of the.
The front and.
Of the front.
What do you say?
Have something. I, I, I hear you. I'm with you.
Thank you.
The thirty five percent, when I look at that property, and this, this has been on a different property too. I looked at some of the site plans and I'm gonna. Are we checking the thirty five percent? Because this looks bigger than than the thirty five percent that we have in our code? And the, the, the calculations like.
And we include our septic drain field in that thirty five percent.
I mean, you look at, you look at the site plan of it and, you know, playing Tetris, I cannot come up with an idea where this, where a third of this property is actually impervious. Not taking the pool into account, which that's a discussion, not taking the septic system into account. Where is the thirty five percent?
Corey Durany, can you address that question about the twenty five percent impervious?
The zoning review is focuses on the building itself. I don't review for impervious, impervious.
Durany?
Okay, that probably the whole in our review, because I personally do not look on that portion. It usually comes down to zoning and managers are more thorough calculation of the actual percentages when we get to that. We usually basically just accept what everything is sent to that, that we can let star.
Yeah, I look at the percentage.
Do you recalculate or you just take them by the word that this is thirty five percent?
I mean, yeah, I take them by their word, but it's deceiving. Like these lots are very deceiving because I used to do that when I'm calculating it myself. And you wouldn't think, you have all of that area to the north and then the side.
Yeah, well, we have a drain field and we have a.
That doesn't mean anything. That's still.
The drain field is taken part of the calculation.
No.
No, it's not, unfortunately. Tara, you need to explain my concern. My concern is that all the places where it goes over here and all the places where it isn't gonna go is hardscaped.
We have that still in the code?
Doesn't give you a get out of jail card, I don't think. If you flood one half of the lot in the street, then the other half is meeting the calculation.
So please do me a favor to check if we took that. Because I'm, I'm, I, I don't know why.
We discussed it a lot and I think the final.
I mean, it used to be twenty five.
Yeah, it was changed to thirty five.
Yeah, I know. And, and, and you look at, you look at, and there's nothing for the applicant. I'm, you know, I'm not trying to beat on you. This is a general thing where, as I said, I looked at a different plan about a week or two ago. And I'm looking at it, I'm like, where's the thirty five percent? Where can that thirty five percent be? We need a thirty five percent. And maybe we need to discuss if we're even getting higher than, because we are, we're causing our own problems.
May I make a comment? This was supposed, pardon, you know, I like, you know, a great deal. This was supposed to be three minutes. It's gone on twenty minutes.
Yeah, you're correct.
Meeting's driving on.
Yes.
Thank you.
And we have an applicant that has something to come forward, which our engineer has already said has discrepancies in it. So let's just.
Thank you. That, that was my.
Dave, you're correct.
Yes, correct. We have another public comment. Please step forward, sir.
My name is Bill Hitting. I live lot one one four, which is the next lot to this project.
Okay, which, which, which direction?
In the east, west, northwest.
And here's the one that has the double lift.
Yes. Mine's got the two lifts.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
So that would show up in the photo.
Yes.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, so my questions are just simple questions. How high will the C wall? See, I've got a C wall that's at a certain height. And I want to know how high the C wall will be on the one one three lot? If someone can tell me.
The C wall is not changing.
It be at the current height. But when they're building new houses, even the new houses are, you know, they're raising those C walls a little bit. So you sure that one one three.
That's one of the discrepancies on the drawings, Bill. That's one of the discrepancies on the drawings. A picture shows it in one place, another one shows it higher. So that's to be resolved.
I guess, I suspect it's gonna raise and I wouldn't want it to raise five feet or, you know, something. All right, so I've got a, I've got a couple, couple of questions or maybe just have to combine two here. I want to know that whether one, the swimming pool is only about five feet from my lot line. And I think that's code that in, in, in terms of this pool going up nine feet, you know, that's pretty drastic, you know, right next to my lot line. I've got a swimming pool in my backyard. It's probably at least twenty feet to lot one one three. It's, you know, it's, it's kind of graduated. And I guess I would ask that all of these abrupt changes in altitude, elevation just be graduated a little bit, you know, sloped would be a suggestion. If they could, you know, slope this thing out a little bit, then it won't be these abutments that come right up. You know, block a, a big influx of water from a storm or what, whatever, if it could all graduate to whatever the.
Mind you, you have three minutes, so you can bring it to close.
So that's my request. I'll thank you.
Yeah, we, we thank you for, for speaking up. Any other public comment? Yes, Betty, please. We need some wisdom here.
I have to debate on planning and zoning, will we vote all the rules hopefully for the canals and railways so that neighbors would have consideration, all the people building in the back of a canal? We're not inhibit the access and freefall of boats. And it seems to me we've sort of gotten away from that neighborly attitude. Think about your neighbors when you're building walls and docks and things like these. And we must have missed something before we made all the plans.
Thank you, Betty. I appreciate it. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll call public comment to close. Does the applicant wish to make any other comment? Staff, do they wish to make any other comment? Okay, we will call the quasi judicial hearing to a close. Now this gives the opportunity for, for commission to discuss this matter and to make any motions.
I'm gonna pass out the section sixty three dash fifty six, just in case when you're referring it to making, when you're making your motion, okay?
I've got my sections already.
Thank you. And and Roger, this is what gives us, this is the authority that this commission has to make decisions and the criteria we must use in making those decisions.
Rick, am I correct in that the applicant, applicant is not voluntarily deferring?
I, we left that question in it, in the open and even though we closed the hearing, I want to give him the opportunity after hearing the discussion, hearing your neighbors' comments. Do you wish to defer to the next meeting or proceed?
When's the next meeting?
It would be on. Yep, so November fifteenth.
So we'll just have a, just, just vote for it and we'll go from there again.
You, you would, you would like an action today?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's where I thought we were on that.
I'll propose a motion whenever.
I'd like to kind of pull the board here for a moment and then just, hey, Roger, do you have any further comments or anything you want to share with the rest of the?
I think there are too many uncertainties relating to discrepancies, the neighbors' concerns to what the differences between the images showing what it would look like and then the detailed drawing. So I wouldn't be able to approve that circumstance.
And Dave?
I think everyone realizes that I like to see things move forward, but when the engineer says there's discrepancies and they need to be resolved, they should have been resolved today, but they weren't. So I, I'm, I'm gonna fall into. I think we need to have something that we all can agree on.
Thank you. Neil, did you want to do a motion?
Okay, so I, I'm going to make a motion that we guess it wouldn't be deferred at this point.
Yeah, it can be deferred, absolutely. Work to the next meeting and address the conditions that you put in place.
I would support that.
Okay, I, I will do it as a defer based on inconsistencies, based on lack of engineering specifics referencing walls, wall heights, fences and drainage. And also subject to section six, three fifty six. Or entities one, lowercase b, number one and number four.
Do I hear a second?
And give you a moment to look and see which of the sections were, if you'd like to look them up on your. The first one was
one B one.
One B one, building should be designed to enhance the surrounding neighborhood relationship of the building and site to adjoining areas. I don't think it met that. And number four of B was the height and scale of those structure, structures should be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Besides the technical issues of inconsistencies. So that's my motion.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second to defer based on these criteria, which this board is empowered to. And I'd like to call for a vote now. And all in favor of the motion for two defer all, say aye.
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 Roger, you said aye?
I did say aye.
Thank you. Aye. Thank you.
Just before we move on, is there anything specific you want the applicant to have in your application when coming back? Like, do you want to see the civil drawings in your plans for moving forward? Do you want to see any calculations, anything extra you want to see? That we can have the applicant.
I think that was in the motion. Inconsistencies resolved. And, and there's more, more inconsistencies than I outlined here at this meeting on, on that page. What is it? S P one oh one is full of inconsistencies. So inconsistencies, walls, positions and heights, fences, positions and heights, and drainage issues resolved. And highlighted. Whatever drawings it takes to do that, it probably will take several things from the engineer and the app.
And I would assume you want to see a visual of what that wall and the fence and everything is gonna look like.
I'd like to, I'd like to, pardon?
You want everybody to look at that.
An accurate render. One that somebody will stand by, yes. Now, whether that requires more surveying, that's up to Tara, not up to me, to, to execute those things, more calculations. But at this point, I would like, if there are calculations and things, I would like to be able to view them. Whatever input goes into those four items, I would like to see.
I would, I would, just to clarify, I would say that the rendering, A two oh three, show the pool area, there are two of those. And it show the area to the side of the two car garage where the long retaining wall. That picture doesn't even show a wall. So the, the picture should accurately display what's intended to be told. Thank you.
Thank you. Next agenda item is commissioner's comments. And Dave, you have a comment?
Yeah, I see certain problems that dropped up in our planning and zoning process over the first year. When I started as a regular member, we had far fewer meetings than we have now. And the demands on us have changed substantially, requiring a substantial commitment to this process. Today's meeting, as evidenced, it's too long. We lose our focus, things go out tangentially and it's not comfortable. I do believe, I'm glad Roger's with us, but I think what's going on is something that discourages people from wanting to be on the commission. And current members seem to be avoiding certain meetings. When we had our joint workshop, I could look at all present members and, and just see the frustration in everyone's eyes. And that's what prompted me to want to bring this up today. Our town commission has created directives that P and Z is responsible for, that now they're having issues with. And one of them is our architectural. So we take hits on that. We take hits on law. We've had planning and zoning members become targets of angry residents. So my thought is, what can we do to make the process more effective and less onerous for those of us that sit here? We, we've got to streamline the permitting process, which I believe staff has done, so that when something comes here, we can look at it, talk about it relatively briefly and either say, yep, this is good, or hopefully not have to say no. Let's try to reduce meetings if it's at all possible. We, we've gotten sucked into one and two meetings a month that last anywhere from two hours to God knows how long. I would suggest that we look at our architectural reuse motion and decide whether it's good or whether it's overstepping something that the town commission should make decisions on. And my old fallback is, let's make sure that our personal taste as commissioners don't reflect in the comments we make on an applicant. So I'll be glad to pass these out and I'd like to hear from my friends because. So I'll be glad to pass these out and I'd like to hear from my friends because we may disagree, but we really work hard not being disagreeable to one another. And that's what makes us worse. Maybe something not entirely recognized by other residents or even our town commission. So if any of you guys have any input, I'd like to hear it, and if you don't.
I, I share your thoughts, right? It's, the solution is the tough one.
Yeah, I mean, I know that you were thinking about leaving and you were embangled to come back and we're glad to have you here. You had a great meeting today, but it's hard work.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Roger, do you?
I'm a lover, so I probably am partly responsible for it today. Appreciate your patience.
You did, you did very well, thank you. Neil?
I, I don't begrudge the town my time, I don't begrudge my fellow committee members the time. So I, I don't have a problem on that issue. And on the issue of what is within our domain and what is outside our domain. That, that discussion began at the joint meeting and is going to continue at the next one. So I think that one is addressed.
Thank you. I have one comment, it's much less global than that. It's, goes specifically to the staff comments from Droni on 18 Ocean Avenue. I highlighted that you noted that you had, have them remove a closet from an office. I wasn't sure why, but I wanted to share with Droni something that was discussed by. Before you were here. And it was the consensus of this group that if, if a room had a door on it, whether it had an office, whether it had a closet or not, because of armor, I can remember Penny specifically bringing this, or some type of movable closet could be put in there, that we should always count that room in our, in our counts. And I think when I looked at the labeling, they were all counted that way. But, so this isn't any, that's why I didn't bring it up when we were discussing 18, because I think 18's fine. But I wanted you to know that this is maybe not in the code, but the view of this commission was that if it, if it looks like a bedroom, and this came up because of park, parking counts. Whether, whether a place had, a home had sufficient parking counts. So just, I just wanted to share that with you, you don't have to say anything if you don't care.
Well, actually, I, I, I would, and I, I'm going to say I value all of your opinion. It's, it's great, all right? And I also celebrate that you guys take time, you know, I get paid and stuff, you guys are doing this for free. Okay? So that, that's a great thing, love you community, you know?
Thank you.
So just to let you know, I'm going to come back to that one. Sometimes someone applies for a building permit. And when I send a comment that this is not consistent with the Florida building code, they come back with a lawyer. And they say, this is what we're doing and, you know, we're not going to give you what the building code says, and it becomes a legal issue, okay? What this board does is very relevant. We deal with things, you know, from elevation and deal with it, and there is more respect for the board than there is for me. And that's, that's a fact, okay? So a lot of things will be resolved. Absent what you do, building permits will triple or quadruple the review time because of the fights that the building official will get into with applicants, especially for new development. Okay, I'm going to put that out here. Back to the rooms. I see libraries, gyms, office, lounge, or even labels saying potential bedroom. I see empty rooms with Murphy beds, okay? And it comes back down to the same thing, when, when, when I make a comment, somebody comes back, they say, you know, who are you to be telling me this? So just to let you know that, you know, me capping the planning and zoning will not help the town in any way.
Do we need to see that that hole in the code is, is closed?
It, it is there, and I guess we just have to make sure that, you know, we, we spend more time focusing on that. And we do catch most of them. So just, just answer that.
It, it, it came up with, in issues with sufficient parking and garage space in the past. We're not trying to tell somebody how many bedrooms to put in their house. We're saying if you're going to put this many bedrooms, you need this many parking spaces. And then your impervious calculation has to work out. So that, that's, that's our view on it. We're, we're not trying to tell people how to design their home. Okay, so, thank, thank you, thanks for your comment. Is.
I have a comment?
Yes, please.
Based on the property on Ocean Avenue, I, I would like us to open up looking at porches, covered patios. I don't know, I don't know where it goes, whether it's a percentage of the overall building's size that is on the far, but when the number of porches and patios add up to half of a 4,000 foot house, I think, it's something that we need to, you know.
So that's a future agenda item.
I would like to.
Well, it can't be a future agenda item unless, let me, until it goes to the town commission.
Correct.
The town commission directs this board to look at certain issues. So if you wanted to put that in your planning and zoning report to the town commission for the next meeting, that was, that's how I would suggest bringing it up.
And then we would be asking for direction at that next November meeting, or do we wait to workshop it?
Yeah, I would bring it to the November meeting.
Okay, thank you. Very good. Everyone agree that that's a topic that needs to be, yeah, because.
Thank you.
This could be, one, one scene that could be bigger than what we saw today, so. Thank you.
Rick, are you covering that meeting or is Mark?
I believe I will be because Carl will be wanting a report here any day.
Yeah, by tomorrow.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll do our best. Thank you. Hearing nothing else from the commission, and Sarah, call for adjournment?
I motion, I appreciate it.
Bye bye. Thank you, everybody, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Tara.
Thank you.